Good evening. I'd like to welcome every everyone to the Gladstone City of Gladstone Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, November fifteenth. Tammy, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Milch.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Mercero.
Here.
Commissioner Volbada.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Present. Let's salute the flag, please. Okay, before we move on with the meeting, I'd like to turn it over to Administrator Betts.
Thank you and good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. I'd like to introduce you to our new senior planner. Her name is Heather Austin, and I believe she's joining us via Zoom tonight.
She is coming on right now.
So Heather will become the primary planner with Gladstone. She has more than twenty years' experience in land use planning and community development, including development review and long-range planning for local governments, nonprofit communities, outreach organizations, and aviation developments. Heather loves the dynamic and diverse nature of her work. She has managed projects ranging in size from single-business site design to a three-hundred-acre mixed-use concept plan. She has also managed complex updates to local development codes, compliant with regional and state land use laws and regulations, drawing on her experience to help clients find elegant and practical solutions to project challenges. Prior to her joining Three J in two thousand twelve, Heather worked for seven years as a planner for the city of Sherwood, and she will officially take over to allow Joy Fields a vacation in December. She will be joining you at your December twentieth meeting, but officially in January, she will take over as your senior planner. So, thank you, Heather.
Welcome aboard, Heather. It's nice to have you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet everyone, and I'm looking forward to being there in person in December and bringing forward a couple of land use applications for you. And I'm just looking forward to learning about Gladstone and what you do. So, thank you for having me, and I'll see you all soon.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for joining us, Heather, and you've got a real hard act to follow. Joy was a super person, so.
I met with Joy today, and I know exactly what you mean, but I'm gonna do my best.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Our consent agenda. We're going to hopefully approve the October eighteenth meeting minutes. Then our regular agenda, we're gonna go over the monthly planning report for October. And then number three, we'll continue our public hearing for file TXT dash two zero two two dash two, the proposed amendments to the C-two zoning district and the new downtown overlay plan. First, does anyone have any changes or corrections or anything input for the meeting minutes? And I entertain a motion to approve them.
I saw no corrections for the minutes of October, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Langston not made the motion, and Commissioner Smith seconded it. Tammy, can you do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Hi.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Meetings are, meeting minutes are approved. With Joy not being here, who's going to do the planning report?
I think it's just basically for you to review.
Okay.
If you have any questions, we can certainly pass those along. If not, it's more informational for you, for the planning commission.
Do any of the commissioners have anything, any input or any questions?
I have none.
Okay.
I have none.
None.
And anybody else? No? Okay. Then let's go on to number three, which is our continued public hearing. Right?
Bringing up.
Okay. Let's continue our public hearing.
John, are you able to unmute yourself?
I should probably be formal and say I, at six thirty-six, we're opening, reopening the public hearing.
Yeah, I guess I'll introduce myself. Hi, everyone. Planning Commissioners, members of the public. My name is John Venus. I'm a project manager with MIG, and we're the consulting team helping the city of Gladstone with two pieces of the municipal code that's under review this evening. The C-two zoning districts, community commercial, and then a new downtown overlay district. So, happy to talk about this tonight. Basically, I've got a brief presentation, for those of you that were able to join at the work session back in July. We covered everything in the packet. So you'll see a lot of what's in this presentation is very similar to what you saw back over the summer. But the goal tonight is to recap what we talked about back in July. We have made some changes. Those are reflected in the packet you have tonight, and we'll highlight exactly what those are in our presentation. And then joining me from MIG is Keegan Gillick. He's gonna help walk through some of the changes to the overlay zoning district. So we'll spend a little bit of time going through the presentation and then turn it back over for questions and discussion.
And who would you like me to have share screen for the presentation?
That would be me, please. Okay, so showing up okay?
Yes.
Okay, so a brief overview of the presentation for our portion of tonight's hearing is kind of go, go through a little bit of review of why we're here, why, what we're talking about, and the purpose of these amendments in the new overlay district. So we'll talk a little bit about the purpose, walk through a recap of the process, how we got to where we are tonight. And then, as I mentioned, we'll, we'll do a overview of a similar presentation that you saw back in July with a summary of what's been revised and updated since you last saw this. And then finally, we'll talk through what comes next. So, going back to, geez, a lot of planning that's taken place in Gladstone, all the way back to twenty seventeen and beyond, is really looking at making downtown Gladstone much more vibrant, welcoming place to be, more opportunities for living, for working, and for enjoying the small-town atmosphere in downtown Gladstone. So a lot of this came from recommendations from the downtown plan, the downtown revitalization plan that was adopted in twenty seventeen. So if you remember, a lot of the recommendations, we have those summarized in the packet tonight and a little bit in the presentation. The purpose, the analysis, and some of the recommendations stem from that downtown plan. So very important part of tonight's discussion. The other purpose is to meet more opportunities for housing. The city recently updated its zoning code to allow for middle housing, which was a big milestone and step in the direction to provide more housing choice. That includes choices in downtown. And then the last bullet point on here is involving the community and decision-makers in understanding potential changes. And I'll walk through exactly what we did to take that on. So just a quick snapshot of the process started in summer of twenty twenty-one. We walked through some potential ideas, concepts, and draft amendments since then. And as I mentioned, we had our last workshop over the summer and review meeting here tonight. So just a recap of some of the background information. The city and consultant team have used to inform the code amendments, going back to two pretty major studies in twenty nineteen. One was the housing needs analysis. So really documenting in very clear detail about deficiency of needed housing types throughout Gladstone. This is a citywide analysis, but really helped the city look at what would be needed in downtown. The other was the code audit in twenty nineteen. Again, this focused on housing, but really helped to solidify the need to expand housing opportunities throughout Gladstone and downtown in particular. So let's take a quick look at some, some strategies that came out of that downtown revitalization plan. Again, this is the basis of our work, kind of the, the springboard for what we've been doing over this last year. So the very first recommendation was to establish a downtown overlay zone. So there are a lot of uses that are allowed today in the C-two community commercial district. The recommendation was really to start fine-tuning the mixture of uses in the design of future development in, along Portland Avenue. By reducing off-street parking requirements in the downtown core, permitting a broader range of housing, as we've talked about. Prohibiting new single-family detached housing for a number of reasons, but the main one being to allow for a greater mixture of uses. Maintaining the existing height limit. We'll talk about that in a minute here. And then clarifying and strengthening design standards. So really, again, bolstering and clarifying the type of desired development that the community and the city would like to see in their downtown. So we've worked quite a bit with Joy Fields, with the city, on these ideas, going back and forth. We've met with you all. And then we also had an open house to hear from the broader community on some of the ideas that we were putting forward. So this is just a couple of images from the open house we had back in June. So really nice sunny day, had a good turnout, and heard a lot of great ideas about what folks liked, what they thought maybe could change. So we brought those back into the proposed amendments that you saw back in July. So what we'll do next is a recap of the proposed changes. As we mentioned, you've seen everything here. I do really want to highlight on what's changed since we met back in, in July. So we're gonna go through both chapters. First, the C-two zoning district. So the C-two zoning district is located in four different parts of Gladstone. Obviously, we're talking a lot about Portland Avenue, the biggest area of the C-two zoning district. But it's important to keep in mind that C-two zoning exists in three other locations, much smaller. You know, in one case, we're talking about one parcel, a few parcels over here, but it does exist in other locations in addition to Portland Avenue. So key recommendations from the downtown plan for the C-two zone in particular. Mentioned housing, prohibiting new detached single-family dwellings, parking reduction, and restricting off-street parking between the building and street front or setback. So we addressed those recommendations, brought those into the proposed amendments. These tables just do a quick highlight of what's in your packet tonight with the redlined strikeout versions. But basically, where the changes take place, what the existing standard is today, what the downtown revitalization plan recommended, and then what the proposed amendment is. With the C-two zoning district, there really weren't a lot of changes, hardly anything significant that we talked about back in July. So just really a recap of what's proposed. Much of this is, is a refresher. So in chapter seventeen eighteen, just clarifying the types of middle housing that would be permitted in the C-two zoning district. So attached housing, townhouses, cottage clusters, permitting multi-household development outright. And as I mentioned, prohibiting detached single-family uses. And with any new zoning district amendment or change, these apply to new development. So something important to keep in mind. Some various changes in some other chapters, parking reductions here. So we talked a little bit about that. So parking, minimum parking reductions for new development. Some changes to setbacks. Again, this came out of the recommendation for the downtown plan. So really maximizing use of space downtown, especially for smaller parcels that don't have a lot of space for larger setbacks. So reducing those setbacks. Implementing the recommendation to prohibit new drive-throughs in the C-two zone. So that's included. And then height in the C-two zoning district. The current requirement is to allow maximum of thirty-five feet, and then to add potentially an additional story if an automatic sprinkler system is provided. The downtown plan recommended removing that height bonus, so just keeping it at thirty-five feet as a maximum. So that's what the proposed amendment is in the C-two zoning district. So again, hopefully, if, if you were here in July, those are very similar to what you saw back then. Not a lot of changes there. Okay, so let's talk about the downtown core overlay zone. We spent most of our time back over the summer discussing some ideas and potential changes to this chapter. So we want to make sure we highlight some of those changes. And I do want to point out, I don't think we touched on this, the memo that's in your packet tonight walks through very similar to what we talked about in July, but walks through in a little bit more detail about those specific changes. So I'll turn it over to Keegan, and he'll walk us through some of those changes to the proposed downtown core overlay zone.
Awesome. Thanks, John. Can I go into the next slide for me? Thanks. So some of the key recommendations from the downtown revitalization plan included, like John mentioned earlier, establishing the downtown overlay zone, allowing for more variety in housing types, including mixed use and middle housing downtown, requiring non-residential uses on the ground floor along Portland Avenue, increasing the maximum height to forty feet when a fifteen-foot ground floor is provided, as well as new site and building design standards unique to the downtown overlay zone, reduced off-street parking requirements, and reduced landscaping requirements. Next slide. In July, we had a work session where we got feedback on some of the changes that we had proposed. And so we've incorporated some new things into the downtown overlay zone based on some of the feedback that we heard. And that included increasing the maximum height to four stories, up to fifteen feet, when a fifteen-foot ground floor is provided, exempting minimum parking requirements in the downtown overlay zone, but still retaining the off-street parking standards, which, which would also put us in line with some of the new rules coming from the state in regards to minimum parking reductions. We also extended the boundaries of the downtown overlay zone and allowed for mobile vending carts, such as food carts in the overlay zone. Yeah, so on the left, you can see the red dotted line was the initial overlay zone boundary. And on the right is the revised overlay zone boundary, which, which extends east-west to the edges of the C-two district. Next slide, please. So these are some of the specific code changes that are coming with the downtown overlay zone. Some of these I already mentioned, like requiring non-residential uses on the ground floor, new site and building design standards for the overlay zone, and increasing the maximum height to four stories, not to exceed fifty feet if a fifteen-foot ground floor is provided. Next slide. Some other code updates include requiring the primary entrance to be adjacent to Portland Avenue, reduced landscaping requirements along Portland Ave, and as well as reduce off-street parking requirements. And that's unique to the, these are already unique to the downtown core overlay zone. Yeah, and with that, I think I can hand it back over to John if you have any additional information you'd like to add.
Yeah, thanks, Keegan. So again, that was a pretty quick recap. We realized this was reviewed for a lot of you, but I know there is a lot to cover tonight in terms of some of the changes that we proposed that have changed. So hopefully that provides a little bit of an overview. We want to make sure we can spend some time now kind of going through the questions. You have any potential changes? So we're happy to, happy to answer those. So with that, we'll turn it back over to Planning Commission. Thank you.
Did, did we receive any correspondence regarding this at all?
We, we had one, actually two that asked to speak tonight. So yes, we do have.
So we just received our, our staff report. And let's have public testimony. Any interested person may present testimony concerning the proposed amendments. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment on the person, on the proposal before the city makes a decision. We want to hear what you have to say, and we want you to give us your point of view to help us understand why you have drawn your conclusion and how it relates to the proposal. This would be testimony, the first would be in favor of this proposal. You want to go ahead?
And I'm, I'm not sure. I just received that they wanted to speak tonight, so I don't know if it's in favor or not. But I can call the first one is Dwayne Katie, and I will switch him over.
Thank you very much.
Dwayne, are you able to unmute yourself?
There you go.
Dwayne, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the council for contracting with consultants such as John Southgate. He's answered all my questions and been very helpful in bringing, bringing me up to speed with what the city intends. As stated in the email, I recently took possession of the building on two ninety-one Portland Avenue. And the building is in compliance with the codes that were in existence in the nineteen seventies. But I have read that the city intends to bring out the sidewalks up to nineteen feet. So my first question is, is that, is that intention on for both sides of the street or just one side of the street? And then the other concern I have is regarding the codes proposal. This would be seventeen dot eighteen dot zero five zero subsection one, and this can be found on page seven of the development code strategies. Currently, drive-through is permitted in parking lots. The new code would prohibit that. So really, my request is pretty straightforward. I'm actually seeking some assurance in writing that if you folks do bring out the curbs or the sidewalks, or if you tear up the sidewalks, those curb cuts will be reinstalled so that we will have access to that parking lot.
John, would you like to take this?
Dwayne, hello. This is John Southgate. I think that, if I understand, so you have a current access on Portland Avenue, and the possibility, actually technically unrelated to this zoning code conversation. But as I think you all know, on the Planning Commission, the city's, part of the downtown revitalization, revitalization plan calls for modifications to Portland Avenue at some point in the future when there's sufficient funding. And I think Mr. Katie just wants, quite logically, wants assurance that his existing curb cut won't go away when that, when that happens. And that's actually more of a public works question than, than the zoning question. I will say in my experience that when this kind of project is taken on, boy, I, I can remember even in the, the transit mall in downtown Portland, where they, they expressly prohibited curb cuts. But if you have an existing one, they rebuilt that curb cut as part of the transit mall project a long time ago in the seventies. So I, I don't know, Jackie, I, I would assume that, that the public works would, would work with property owners on things like curb cuts if and when the Portland Avenue project is undertaken.
Yes, that's correct. I, I don't have the Public Works Director here tonight to answer that specific question, but we're basically talking about a grandfathering in for the reassurances. So taking copious notes, and I think that that is probably what Dwayne is looking for, but I would need to talk to Public Works in order to give the assurances and writing for something of that nature.
So if I could ask a follow-up question on that, and thank you for pursuing this. I appreciate that. When would be a normal time frame to, to expect an answer from Public Works? When, when should I check back with you?
Yeah, we're taking this to the city council on December thirteenth, so it would need to be prior to that time.
Okay, great. And that's, that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Katie. Tammy, our next individual, please.
Our next is Bob Everett, but I don't see him here. And those are the only two that had requested to speak.
Okay, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak? Could you please come forward and state your name and address, please? Can you need to speak into the mic? Yeah, that you need to push the button there so we can get it on the recording. Thank you, sir. Perfect.
Ray Fletcher. I'm at one four zero West Arlington. And I'm all for the changes, a hundred percent. I wish we can move on it tomorrow. What we'd like to do is, is put food carts there. We have plans drawn up. We're obviously, we've been talking with Joy, and she's not giving us anything yet because obviously this is all in waiting. So I think the first question for you guys would be, would we, would we be grandfathered in on the setbacks with, so that building there now, I don't know if you, anybody knows, is the old market next to Masala Box. And so we're trying to demo that building. We're ready to go. We got our bids. We'd love to get it. I just got a, I just got an eight hundred dollar bill today because I had no idea that even though you're not using water and sewer, you still get to pay for it, which was fun. But regardless of that, so we would like to get started on the demo. And so I'm just looking for some assurance that we can and we wouldn't lose any type of grandfathering and setbacks. Should we keep a wall up? I mean, I'm a realtor, so I always, you always hear about you keep a wall up, and then you can just build off, and you don't have to restart the permits. So any guidance on where to go from here, because we bought this thing in April, and we would love to get going.
Steph, do you have any, I'm, I'm assuming this, we can't say anything until this actually gets approved by the city council. But Steph, do you have anything to add?
Well, John mentioned that this was for new development, correct? So with, I don't know if this would, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that would. Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing. Nobody knows. So what do we, what should we do? I mean, what do I do? We could start demoing the first of the month and have a, just a nice flat gravel yard there for everybody's ice circuit go away.
I, I hear what you're saying. You don't want to give up if there's any grandfather status. What I would recommend, first of all, of course, this won't take effect until, I, I assume the city council acts, and then there's some period of X weeks. So you have a little bit of time. I, I almost think Joy and I, maybe we should at least have like a Zoom meeting. And if you just have a picture of this, I'm gonna take this building down. I'm gonna keep this up. I'm gonna put the food carts here, whatever it is. And then make sure, all right, those things you should take care of now because the new code won't allow it. These things, the new code will allow, and the current code won't. So I think it's probably gonna be a little bit of choreography.
And then how confident are we on, so with these, with this fifty-by-a-hundred lot, parking is not an option? So this new parking plan is perfect.
Yeah, once, once it's approved and passed, yeah.
So we should just.
It's all going to depend on when you put your permanent, right? So whatever the code is at that time, that you got to follow that code.
Right.
Once, when we make these changes, then we'll have a new set of code that will review your application under.
Right. So we'll kind of just hold off still.
I mean, you know.
Yeah.
This is going to be your decision, partner. But we'll, you know, we, we'll do our part.
So when's the voting on all this plan?
So for the planning commission, you will be making a recommendation tonight. It will go to the city council on December thirteenth. If the city council approves that, it'll take thirty days for it to go into effect. So you're looking at mid-January.
Okay.
I would suggest that what you're requesting is more of an administrative meeting with Mr. Southgate planning to, to, to figure out what you should be moving forward with now versus what the new code would do. And that's what I would suggest the next step would be.
Okay.
To do that.
All right.
We're very excited for what you're proposing. We just want to make sure that, like you, we're doing our diligence to give you the correct information. Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Please come forward. State your name and address. Make sure the button's on. Perfect, thank you.
All right. My name's Terry Marsh. My residence is sixty-three ten Southeast Jennings Avenue, Milwaukee, Oregon. Had to say it, sorry. So my family owns the property on the corner of Arlington and Portland Avenue. I had a chance to speak to you one time before. I appreciate that opportunity in July. What I would like to say is, is you guys are definitely on the right track. Having been perhaps the only property owner along Portland Avenue who has kind of tried to go through this process and experiencing those circumstances under the old code, I can tell you that we're very problematic and brought a project that we attempted very much along the lines of what you're considering here, a multi-level building with retail space on the bottom floor, office space in the second, residential on the third. The cost benefit analysis on that came to a screeching halt. When it is, we discovered that about half the property had to be used up either with landscaping or with off-street parking. So when you consider the depth of the lot that is involved here and you consider that half of it had to be devoted to parking and landscaping, the numbers just don't work themselves out. So I can't thank you enough for what it is you're considering now because this makes a project along those lines much more photographic. In other words, we can see it. We couldn't before. So I just want to tell you, we're in complete support. My family is complete support of what it is you're doing here. Encourage you to continue along these lines. Look forward to talking with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I will ask again, is there any further testimony that anyone would like to give, whether it's via Zoom or in the audience? I'm assuming that's a no.
I see no hands raised on Zoom, so we're good.
Okay. Does the staff have any more comments to add?
I just wanted to point out, I, both Tammy and I have received inquiries from folks who own property outside of the proposed boundary. As, as John presented earlier, at, at your suggestion or direction, the last meeting in July, the boundary has been expanded, it's been widened, but it still terminates at Exeter. And these are property owners further north. And some of this John Venus could speak to better than me, but we sent out a notice to folks saying, hey, we're, the planning commission will be considering these code changes. Here's the proposed boundary. If you're interested in these but are outside of that boundary, you should let us know. So we heard from two gentlemen. They, I don't know if they're, they're listening on, on Zoom, but what I tried to convey to them, I, I, I offered to, to talk to them. I haven't heard back from them. But there is a challenge in that the on paper traffic capacity, if we dramatically upzone this property relative to what is currently allowed, that could trigger intersection problems or something like that. And then I, I'm going to ask John to follow up on what I just said. But, but because of that, my recommendation to you and what I would tell them, if I get a chance to talk to them is to be patient. My view and just your consultant talking here, but, but is I'm hoping, of course, that, that this is adopted. You may want to make, make some tweaks to this. That's your prerogative. That's your obligation. But hopefully there'll be a downtown overlay zone as of, you know, city council action based on your recommendation. And I, I don't think that's, it, it's not set in stone in that it's not. That boundary can change in the future. And honestly, I think if someone who owned a property along the downtown corridor want to do a great mixed-use project as envisioned in the downtown revitalization plan, I think by then, if not at that point, that's a good chance for you to say, well, okay, it's now twenty twenty-six, whatever. It's time to look at the boundaries and maybe we need to expand them. So, so that's, that's my, my counsel to them. I think it, it, it would be hard to dramatically expand the boundary at this time, based on what I understand, having talked with Mr. Venus and with his sub-consultant with Kittleson. And you might want to hear from Mr. Venus to confirm that what I just said is accurate, so.
Mr. Venus?
Yeah, thanks, John. This is John Venus with MIG again. Yeah, so since July, we did speak with our another, another team member, Kittleson, that do a lot of this kind of work. And we had a really good conversation about the potential of expanding the overlay district boundary even further, as we talked about back in July. And the, the real challenge comes up against number one, the downtown revitalization plan was pretty specific on keeping that overlay district boundary very compact. One, to kind of mirror existing uses and existing development patterns. And two, not to dilute the, you know, kind of the, the energy and the potential for Portland Avenue into a smaller, more compact area. So that was kind of the first item that we discovered. The second is really a much more involved process that the city of Gladstone would have to follow, which is essentially the, the statewide transportation planning rule. And in a nutshell, I'm not a transportation planner, but in a nutshell, it's essentially requiring cities that, as John mentioned, do any significant upzoning. And there's a, a much more specific definition to what significant means. But essentially, anytime the city does a comprehensive plan change amendment, zoning code change, and you're now adding significantly more employment or housing, it requires the city to do a lot more analysis to show what those impacts are. So some of this was done back in the downtown revitalization plan. So again, this, the study was, was looking at what those potential changes are, rightsizing it for Portland Avenue. But now that we're taking another look at it, we, I know we had some interest over the summer to potentially expand it even greater than what we've already expanded it to. It starts to get a little bit trickier in putting the, the onus back on the city to show what those potential changes would do. And that's again, going any greater than what we have shown tonight. So right now we have new boundary, as we showed in the presentation. But again, as John mentioned, we're, we're not going any north, any more north than Exeter currently.
Just a follow-up question on that. So if we did expand, we'd have to, like you, you indicated, we'd, we'd have to submit some sort of data that would show how the, how would the increase in population basically or businesses, we'd have to kind of show what that would look like. And I imagine that'd be kind of difficult at this point, based on what's there on Portland Avenue at the, at the moment. Would it be a safe assumption to assume that if we made this, this change, it would, and as things progress over time, we would, that would give us more of a understanding and greater ability to make those calculations in the future?
That's, that's, yes, I would say that's getting closer to kind of what the, the background is. The, the trick would be, you know, the kind of the, the general math is comparing what the development capacity would be based on existing zoning. So if you were to build out, you know, all of Portland Avenue within that boundary, how much population would you have? How much housing, you know, how much employment would you have? And then you'd have to compare, okay, let's say we expanded that several blocks to the north. You know, maybe expanded it east-west, another block or so. What would that change be? And would it be significant enough where it would now cause, you know, much greater impacts to traffic and associated changes than what was initially planned through the city's adopted comprehensive plan?
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Tammy? I see that Mr. Everett is here. If you don't, you do give any testimony? Okay, just want to check. You're welcome. There's something I forgot before we move forward. I want to make sure that there's no conflicts of interest or abstentions by any of our commissioners. Commissioner Mercer, do you have any?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
None.
Commissioner Langston?
None.
Jennifer?
No conflicts.
Okay. Andrew?
No.
No, okay. And Michael, do you have any?
No, none for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. So do we have any more? Is there any additional questions?
I have one. I'm not sure who to direct this to, either to Mr. Venus or to John Southgate. But on the handout that we got on page three eight, the bottom section speaks about reducing off-street parking. We currently have, I think the current code for residential, we allow one and a half spaces per unit and we want to go to a half a unit per, for half a space per unit. We just ran into an issue on an existing property where they had to extend parking because people weren't necessarily living as couples, but they would be two people sharing an apartment, both of whom had cars. I, I see the decision was based on a fourteen-year-old parking study and anecdotal evidence. And I'm wondering how they were weighted. How was the anecdotal data versus the study weighted in making this decision?
I just have a clarification. I'm sorry, would you be able to clarify the, the, you, you referenced an older study. Was that an actual development application? I just wanted to clarify.
It, it just says it's based on a parking utilization study from two thousand eight. That's what our information says, which is fourteen years old. And the other thing that went into making the decision was anecdotal evidence about parking.
Well, I can, I can just maybe clarify. I think it sounds like the reference, what you're referring to is the it's, let's see, PDF page twenty of the packet. So it's the development code strategies from the downtown plan. Is that the table that you're referring to? Just to, just to.
Development code strategy for the downtown revitalization.
Yes, got, got you. Yeah. So yeah, again, this, this was the, the city's adopted plan, you know, giving us the guidance for updating the code standards to reduce, reduce parking. So that's correct. So the impetus really comes from the downtown plan. And the parking utilization study you referenced from two thousand eight is part of what the downtown plan used for that information. One addition, additional item, and it's noted in the memo. So on the, the last page, let's see, what page is it on? It's on page fifteen of the, of the PDF of the packet. So page three of the memo where we have a, a paragraph, they're talking about eliminating minimum parking requirements in the downtown overlay zone. In that memo, we do talk about some recent rules that came into effect, known as climate-friendly equitable communities rulemaking. And this came into effect in December of this year. So essentially, any new development would, would comply with those rules, whether or not the city updates their development code standards based on the, the statewide, statewide rules. These are very new rules, much like we just walked through with City of Gladstone with the middle housing HB two thousand one changes. These are even newer. These were just, just past, this past December. What those rules talk about is, there's a lot. Some of it's phased. Some of this will happen over time. But the one thing we wanted to update, since we're looking at the code today, has to do with reducing parking minimums, actually eliminating parking minimums. So we, we talk about that in the memo. And again, it's, it's a summary of a lot more information at the state level. It is brand new. A lot of cities are just figuring out what to do. But the one thing that we do know, that we did get guidance from the state on, is that cities like Gladstone have to eliminate minimum parking standards for any areas of the city that are within a half mile of a frequent transit line. We did get clarification from the state that bus route thirty-three along McLaughlin is one of those transit routes. So essentially, a half-mile buffer from that transit route, the city would have to eliminate minimum parking standards. So with the packet, at the end of the memo, there's a map. It's titled Exhibit A. I know I'm jumping around a little bit here. And that's on page eighteen of the, the PDF packet. So Exhibit A is just a quick map. You can see there's the zoning map underneath. And then we just applied a half-mile buffer from TriMet Route thirty-three to show what that area would be. And you can see it's not just the proposed overlay district, it's also all of the C-two zoning along Portland Avenue. So what we're proposing with the changes in this packet is to meet those new state rules and to do that first with the overlay district. However, we stop short of eliminating minimum parking requirements in all of the C-two zoning districts in that area. Because now, as I mentioned, we start to get into those other pockets of C-two zoning, those, those other three locations, which have different conditions. And we want to make sure the city and, and you all in the planning commission have a chance to understand what those impacts would be across the entire zoning districts, you know, across the entire city. What we're recommending is to, number one, meet the state rules. They already apply. So we recommend updating the zoning code to meet the existing statewide rules, which this does. So eliminating minimum parking requirements within that half-mile buffer distance. So that's a, a long story, but there were a few reasons why we're recommending that. Going back to the downtown plan, but now getting all the way up to those new climate-friendly equitable community rules. So hopefully that helped clarify a few things.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions from any of the commissioners, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I think Commissioner Milch has a question.
Okay, please.
Thank you. And just to back, just to follow up on Commissioner Pat Smith's question, the map showing the half-mile buffer is on page three dash six, as things are numbered in our packet, if you wanted to take a look.
Thank you.
And you can see that going a half-mile east from McLaughlin puts that boundary just past the east boundary of the C-two zone. It's in the downtown area, not quite to Chicago Avenue, but almost. So that's why those new rules will apply to virtually all of our C-two zone. And then we'll have to incorporate them. And to clarify, we're talking about eliminating parking. And then we'll have to incorporate them. Uh, and to clarify, we're talking about eliminating parking minimums. We are allowing any developer who uh decides that for market reasons, it's better to have more parking, they would still be allowed to have as much parking uh as the code would currently allow in excess of the minimum. Uh, I don't believe we have any parking maximums in our code right now. Uh, so uh this would help us to avoid the kind of situation where uh, you know, uh we don't want people to think that they are not allowed to have off-street parking. They are. We're just not allowed to compel them to have a minimum amount. Um, one thing about the the plan that I noticed, the memo at the beginning and then some of the language later on. Uh, it would be helpful to get some clarification on the actual boundaries of the uh proposed overlay zone uh in the in the um in the cover letter memo, it refers to boundaries of West Arlington and West Exeter. In the uh the code language itself, uh it refers to East Arlington and East Exeter. And in fact, it's both. Uh, West Arlington is everything to the west of Portland Avenue. East is is everything to the east of Portland Avenue. So uh Arlington Street on the south and Exeter Street on the north of the current proposed boundaries. We have maps that show uh where the actual C-two zone is along Portland Avenue, and it appears to be uh, you know, to put it roughly, half a block from Portland Avenue to the east and to the west. Uh, if you look closely at the map, you can see individual properties. So it's possible to identify whether a property is within that half-block or just outside it. But I think uh it it's helpful to have that map that's at the very end, and that's on page three dash thirty-two. Uh, and I appreciate Keegan pointing that out that we did expand uh what was going to be the proposed overlay zone to go all the way to the edges of the C-two zone on the east and west. And uh rather than just having just having it applied to the properties that front on Portland Avenue. So that's a significant expansion. There are some commercial properties that kind of go around the corner a little bit. And it will make a a more vibrant district, I think, if it has that in margin. So I would uh, you know, be in support of that. Pardon me. Uh, there are also, uh, you'll see the boundary at the south is uh Arlington Street. Clackamas Boulevard, which is also an east Clackamas and a west Clackamas, is the street between there and the river. Uh, there are one or two commercial properties uh on Portland Avenue south of Arlington Street, closer to the river. There's a a residential home uh that uh if the current signage outside is still accurate, uh houses a a law firm. And uh there's another, I I think it's an auto repair business that's south of Arlington, between Arlington and the river uh on the opposite side. So uh uh as John Southgate said, we've reached out to businesses in the area, but it may be that there might be some interest from uh people closer to the river to expand the boundary a little further south. But it it's good to know, uh, as John Southgate said, that we have that flexibility to expand it in the future. And uh, uh, John Venus, I appreciate your pointing out that we we kind of have to look at what the the maximum usage would be according to the way we're 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 planning to zone it uh to determine what the uh traffic impact would be. Uh, it's not just what we have in the works right now or what people are planning to do that we know of. We have to make our decision based on uh well, depending on your point of view, best-case scenario or worst-case scenario as far as future development goes uh that would be allowed under the code. So if we get a lot of new apartments, a a lot of uh commercial businesses uh because we've allowed that in the code, then we kind of have to calculate what the impact would that be on uh the traffic situation and and so so uh uh that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Commissioner Milch, do you have any further questions? No?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Commissioner Labonte, do you have any input or questions?
I guess just a few things here. Um the, you know, we go downtown Portland Avenue and um you look up. One thing that's not reflected in the pictures we see, which are, you know, look nice. The plan is, looks great. New buildings look nice, but we have a heck of a lot of power lines there that are quite unsightly. I don't know. How does that fall? Is that a a question for now or or, you know, if we're putting these units up? I, you know, assume there'll be windows. Um, and they're sitting right right on a whole bunch of wires. I don't know if there's any plan for any any of that as as we look to kind of, you know, maintain a nice view for our for our citizens. Uh, so that's one question I've got is like the treatment of wires through that little Portland Ave area. And I guess I would say I'm a little concerned about, um, you know, the the one great thing about our city is the um it for kids, right, uh and families um and having having kids on being able to ride their bike around and being in a in a kind of a town setting within a metro area. Um, and I I'm a bit concerned because a big part of this kind of falls into the parking. Uh, we're gonna have a heck of a lot of more, you know, cars parked downtown. It's gonna make it way less friendly for, you know, we can talk, say it's a pedestrian route, which it will have to be if there's no parking. Um, you'll find yourself walking a bit more. And I'm, you know, and I am fundamentally concerned that the I so many of the things that I think so many people that I've talked to love about the city, I I don't feel like is reflected necessarily, um especially if we're looking at increasing that overlay zone. The I I remember in our last meeting, there was a discussion about also the the heights of the building. Um, and there was some question about if we don't go up to fifty feet, then people won't bother building. I don't think that should necessarily dictate our decision. Um I, you know, I tend to believe that the a a lower building height is good. Fundamentally, I I believe that this type of zone is best served on on a better transportation route closer to the uh highways, whether it be on Route ninety-nine, which often folks consider to be an eyesore. Or of course, you know, eighty, Old eighty-second there, eighty-second. So the, you know, these are things I have fundamental concerns about the you know, we talk about the the it being a a nice vibrant community and everything like that, but I'm I'm I am concerned that that may not end up being the case. I think that if we have folks that are interested in 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 an increased overlay zone um to sell their property, then that's, I don't know if that's really true, like good for Gladstone. For folks to to really appreciate all the good things that Gladstone has and then say, hey, you know, I can sell this property. They're gonna put up this big thing. I'm out of here anyways. So I think it overall, I'd be more in favor for the smaller, uh, the original plan um to the forty-foot max. And then, uh, you know, the future, we can always change things, but I think that we should be a little bit careful getting getting too ambitious right now. And and let's be clear, we've done our due diligence. Um, we've we've addressed the the state rule to increase our housing and middle housing. We've done a lot of work to make it to do these things. So I don't, I I'm not necessarily in the belief that that more is going to be better for us here. Um, we we've done our our job. Um, but I guess a couple of the basic concerns would be the the parking, which I know there's necessarily not much we can do about it, but it is going to fundamentally change the the way that people interact with the downtown. And also the wires. I'd like to know what what the plan is for the telephone wires, what what happens in and I'm trying to think of um other communities where they have buildings. I believe there's, you know, a mix of approaches for that. But I'd be interested in what types of options might exist um for the power lines. Hopefully, some of that makes sense. Uh, but that would be, I guess, my question and my comment.
Thank you very much. I don't think, um, Mr. Southgate, do we know what they're thinking about in the way of above-ground electrical wires as opposed to putting them in the ground for this
Yeah, I
Part of Portland Avenue?
Thank you. Yeah, I I share that concern. Um, and my thought is that um if individual developments were were required to underground utilities, that that's probably going to be pretty cost prohibitive. I would think the logical time to tackle that is when Portland Avenue, if and when, knock on wood. And I believe it's going to happen in the next five years, or at least the planning for it. Um, I could tell you why. I think there are funding possibilities that are that outside the city that's starting to emerge. But I I that that would be much more efficient and much more cost-effective to do it in one fell swoop. Um, I've been involved in projects where that was done. And if you ask this one property owner to do it, it's like, it's a big big bite. If you do it, cross it over all of the properties on that frontage with outside funding. I think that's that would be um the preference. But I agree with the observation. I I think when you have a beautiful new street, you don't want to have a bunch of old wires and 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 poles. You know, you wouldn't have attractive new lighting and get rid of the wires and all that.
Thank you very much.
Uh, John, though typically uh in a situation like that, uh, PGE would be involved because, I mean, it it's less maintenance on their equipment and whatnot to have all that un- underground, right?
That's a, I'm I'm glad you said that, yes. Um, and and I don't know what your franchise rules are, but I I know that sometimes that could be a negotiation with PG to to contribute because over the long term, you know, what's the net present value of the savings over time that when the next ice storm hits, they're not going to have a problem with with that stretch of wires?
Well, if there isn't any other questions or inputs, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move.
Seconded.
And the motion was made by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Andrew.
Yep.
Tammy, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercer?
Hi.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yep.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Public hearing is closed. Okay, deliberations? Go ahead, Andrew. Don't you have anything?
No, I just turned it on.
Does anybody else have anything that they would like to discuss before we move further?
I have a concern. It it's actually more of a question.
Speak directly into the mic, please.
Since the beginning, I believe the in reduction has been a goal. And I think that's a good goal. However, we are doing things like we have added to the amendment tonight to increase the height of the buildings. And does that lower parking? I guess you could argue it if you like, but in general, to me, it increases the parking or the need for parking. And uh, well, I would like to continue going for parking reduction goal. Uh, I believe hey, and I'll I'll give you some background to do that. I've been a mechanical engineer for a few decades and have been dealt dealing with in those decades many, many building or facility increases in size. And one of the things that generally comes up is parking. And depending how fast you need to accomplish your task, parking can be a big issue. And in my, from my sense, engineering-wise, that needs to be considered if or when you ever need parking to have an option or options to decide how you can deal with that. And and some of the main reason for that, if it's not considered in the beginning, even though you've agreed that we're not going to increase parking, that you may need to increase parking. And especially when you're building a fifty-foot building and increasing the need for parking, that you build the building as a potential option to increase the parking. If you don't do that in the future, it's going to cost a lot more than it's now considered. I would just like to see and and I'd love to have all the commissioners chime in one way or the other, tell me to shut my trap or whatever. But having an option, one of the things I learned over the decades is having options to deal with things, even if you don't need them, is one of the most important things you can do. As I've already said, I'm concerned about and and maybe Mr. Southgate can help chime in. I don't see that we have included options to do that. I guess I I could stop at that point.
Thank you. John?
I if if I understand your question, um, maybe I'd ask you to restate the question, make sure I don't want to answer the wrong question.
The question is that do we have options for increased parking if and or when it is needed?
My understanding is that the state law says that within this area that's with within that boundary, within perhaps a half a mile from uh McLaughlin Boulevard because of the um the transit service available on McLaughlin. Uh, cities, not just Gladstone, cities cannot require parking under the new climate-friendly rules. And as as I think uh Commissioner Milch pointed out, it it's important to note that that this doesn't mean parking won't be allowed. It simply means there will be no minimum that that the city can impose. So quick, the quick answer is no, I don't think there's anything we can do, you could do to require some minimum amount of parking, as far as I understand the law. And that's it's brand new. It hap- that was adopted after this process began. So it's
And it goes in effect January one, twenty twenty-three.
But uh, City Administrator Bets and I met with DLCD, Department of Land Conservation Development Commission staff specifically on this question. There was a bunch of other things we had questions about for her, but but this was something that we zeroed in on is do we have, we essentially asked her the same question you just posed.
We all received, um, the planning commission all received this from Jackie about climate-friendly rules in Gladstone, where it states all of this and when it'll be in effect.
May
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Are are you guys aware of any exceptions in that rule?
I don't think
No, there are none.
It it's, I will agree, it's draconian. And and one of the criticisms I've heard of those rules is is they were sort of a fiat rather than let's talk with planners, let's talk with people like Joy and Heather and me and John Venus and all that. It it so it 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 doesn't have the benefit of a robust public process, for better for worse. Uh, the the thing I wanted to say, sort of uh editorial aside, if I may, is I've worked with um a number of cities that before climate-friendly happened eliminated their parking requirements. Um, downtown Beaverton, downtown Hillsborough, recently downtown Astoria, typically downtowns. And um, I I am confident in saying that 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 the impacts are not as dramatic as one might fear. If 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 these new rules simply meant there's no parking ever built again, I I would have a concern, but I I don't think that's going to happen. And in my experience, developers, for instance, in Beaverton, um, I'd be um, I'd be game to to take us all on a tour to check out projects that have been built under these rules. They might say, I'm going to put in point six spaces per unit because my read of the market and my lender says that's all we need. In in this community, I might still put in one or whatever, as if I'm the developer. So um, I I and I hope Mr. Labonte, Commissioner Labonte knows, I I really respect every time you make these kind of comments. They're coherently and intelligently conveyed, but I I've now had enough experience over the last twenty years that I have not seen, gosh, the elimination of a parking requirement means that it's parking mayhem on the side streets.
May I ask, and you're you have a broader knowledge base than I do in this, when a a lot of people that express concern about this talk about the various areas in Portland. And perhaps we've all had maybe experiences trying to park in in some of these areas. Um, are and my understanding is they're they're, you know, that they've been ahead or they started, let's say, uh, no parking rules earlier, um, a while ago in some areas. And it it, I don't, I uh, Beaverton is one thing. Hillsborough, um, but I wonder if that's like all true across the board, I guess, your comment.
Yeah, I I would say that that Portland, it's tougher. I I I agree that the development has been slower. For instance, some of you know, I've worked in downtown Hillsborough for a number of years, and we would love to have had this problem. We uh, Hillsborough has really had really one mixed use project that's envisioned in this new code. Um, seventy two units, X thousand square feet of ground floor retail. The developer put in three fourths of, uh, no, actually, no, he, I got that wrong. He put in one space per unit. Um, at the time, our code only required three fourths of a space. He said he wished he had put in the smaller number because that would have saved him money and made more profit on the building. Now, that also is really close to a Mac station, so that's different than McLaughlin. Every situation is different. I'd also say Portland, um, and and Mr. Venus can maybe jump in and if if he knows the story better, but they, Portland aggressively eliminated parking requirements some years ago. And there was on places like Division where there's been a lot of development, there were impacts. And and um, as I was saying that about, it's not a problem on side streets. Well, if you live off a division, you have to deal with it.
Yep.
I would acknowledge.
Same with northeast Alberta.
Northeast, the the really hot areas. Don't take this wrong, but I I don't think Gladstone is going to see twenty buildings built overnight. I think if there's one or two or three projects in the next few years, um, I I would hope to see that. And I think there'll be ample time for a course correction. If after the third building, gosh, we're having a problem, we have to, we have to rethink. Now, if the climate friendly rules don't allow us to, then maybe we create incentives to to put in more parking that, you know, there's ways to address it. Uh, the state has put us in a box. I don't think that's going to change. Um, but uh, I I think there are things we could do to try to persuade better parking. But I also think the market will uh, if if I can't rent to my building easily, a a unit in my building because people are frustrated, they can't pu- find a place to park within two blocks. The next building I develop, and I'm seeing this happen, I'm going to put in more parking.
Any other?
Ultimately, this is all for not because we have to have the minimum, there's no minimum.
Rules say we're stuck.
Yeah. Commissioner Milch?
I want to add one thing about uh, the climate friendly rules. One of the other components that we've not talked about is um, apparently there's a requirement uh, in these districts, excuse me. Parking related to uh, housing to unbundle the cost of the parking from the cost of the housing. This is something that uh, when we, when we followed up on the request from the apartment complex on Webster Road to uh, expand their parking, Counselor Matt Tracy asked this question of the developer, had they unbundled or considered unbundling the cost of parking from the cost of housing? And the answer was no, but that may have made a difference up there. Uh, it it said that cost of parking, it can be about one sixth of the cost of uh, uh, providing uh, apartment and house and and parking together. Uh, and so if you rent an apartment for eighteen hundred dollars a month, that automatically includes of assigned parking space. What the law might allow people to do now, or encourage them to do now, is to say, well, let's say three hundred of that is for the parking and fifteen hundred is for the rent. And if someone wants to rent an apartment and forego having a parking space, they'll get that apartment for fifteen, for three hundred dollars cheaper per month than they would if they got it with the parking space. And if someone needed two parking spaces, which turned out to be the case of the in the West Webster Road complex, they could rent an apartment for fifteen hundred and two parking spaces for three hundred each, pay a little bit more, but they would have adequate parking assigned to their unit. So uh, the unbundling strategy is one of the ways that uh, uh, in the housing market at least, parking and uh, residential uses can be balanced to meet what the market demand really is. Uh, and so I s- I hope that uh, developers uh, will not only do what John did, you know, assess the mark, what John mentioned, assessing the market and determining whether they want to exceed the max, the minimum and by how much. Uh, but they'll also uh, consider that unbundling and allow the people who who don't drive, who want to have a car, uh, a a less car dependent existence to be able to rent the apartments uh, for a lower cost than the person who really wants to depend on that because they like living in Gladstone, but they know they're going to commute somewhere uh, a long distance away.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
For City Administrator Bets, on page three nine of our packet, there's a reference to uh, the city's planning to site a public parking lot somewhere in the downtown core. I wonder if you could speak to that a little bit.
Where specifically are you referencing?
Page three nine in the top block on the right hand side of the page.
Oh, this is from the previous strategies.
Is is it a live plan or is it a something?
It's an antiquated plan, but if I had to guess, when we're thinking about public parking in the future, once the new library is built, the old library site is city owned and the city council will need to make decisions on what they want to do with that property. And there has been uh, conversations about making that a public parking lot. So if there was an active public parking lot somewhere in downtown, I would recommend it be that area.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Not a question, but a comment. Um, there was some concern I heard voiced regarding um, what we talked about last time regarding the heights of the building um, from thirty five or forty up to fifty. And I just want to uh, restate like that I'm very for the fifty feet. And the reason behind that being with three stories, the first one having to be retail building and making it pencil, two floors of of uh, residential is very difficult to do. And going back to the goal of livening up the downtown corridor and also bringing more housing, different types of housing to the city, I feel like uh, the fifty feet at the four stories is uh, has has more opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Well, are you ready to move forward to make a decision?
I I just want to make one last take one last opportunity to mention that if we want Gladstone business opportunities to grow, we need to consider how parking can affect that. Again, suggesting that we have options for parking, no matter what the rules are. If we don't do it in the beginning, it will bite us in the tail in the end. It will cost conserving more money. That's all.
Okay. We are bound by the state rules, though. I hear what you're saying, and I agree. There's got to be a compromise or a balance somewhere in the middle. But tonight, I don't think we're going to resolve that issue.
So is it exactly tonight that we are?
Pardon?
This, what what? What's our guidance from here?
That we come to a decision about what our recommendation is going to be to the city council for their next meeting in December.
So I think it'd be good to talk, to get a sense for folks. I'd be interested to see who agrees with the extended overlay zone or who um, agrees more with keeping it to the original plan. That was kind of vetted in part by the, you know, the community uh, in two thousand seventeen and beyond. You know, I've stated my thought on that. I I think that we can always add later if it works out. But I think that kind of our original plan is is good uh, as far as the the area uh, that that we're talking about. So I I'd be interested to see what you you all think of um, of the overlay and the extension of the overlay.
Commissioner Mercero, what's your, do you agree with the new overlay plan?
Uh, the overlay plan as it's laid out is great. It also gives us the option to expand north and or sideways. That's great. When I'm saying still.
You don't need to repeat it.
Why, why are we so eager to have bigger buildings that downtown and and what which will bring more cars? And why, why is that? You know, I often, when I think about this, I often think about, you know, as a child looking at a toy uh, at the store, like, wow, that toy is so cool. It's the coolest toy ever. And they see it in commercials and all of that. It just looks like it's going to be this great thing. Then you get the toy and then like the leg breaks or whatever, and it's not quite what, you know, what you imagined. I'm 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 just curious as to why we're so eager to make these drastic changes to Gladstone. Um, in an area that, I mean, isn't necessarily calling for it uh, and where there's, there's other places in the city that are closer to 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 transit routes. Um, I think we have to be mindful of of what this, because it's true, we might only have two or three projects in the next few years. But those of us that live here and are raising our families and intend to be here for twenty, thirty years, hopefully, um, you know, these, the, this is huge. This is giant. These are the the changes. And and I can't express enough the, what has drawn me and so many folks I've talked to 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 Gladstone, isn't the idea of having an urban core in like apartment complexes or buildings downtown. That's not, that in no way would that have been in my mind moving here years back a- as like something that I wanted. If you want that, you can go to drive a little bit. Go to Selwood, go to these other places. I think we have a, I think we have a special thing here in Gladstone. And I'm af- I'm afraid that we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. And I just really want you to think about what like those larger buildings would look like down downtown everywhere. And furthermore, and I think this is a a worthy thing to mention, you know, we have a benefit of Portland Avenue where it's e- essentially a dead end on either side. But if all of a sudden the population increases and the traffic increases, does the county look and say, hey, wait a minute? Do we put it, do we connect Portland Avenue to Jennings? Do we make that more of a a a throughway? Do we start running traffic through there? And I think those types of long term um, impacts, we we, there's been virtually no discussion of that. Uh, what is that long term impact? Are we going to have, like, yes, we're going to have more traffic, but this is also open us up to to traffic through Jennings and there, uh, which is now a a pedestrian route. I think these are real things that we might run into. And the, our city is going to look a heck of a lot different and perhaps quite generic um, ten years from now. That's my comment.
Okay, I want to get a consensus still. Um, Commissioner Smith, are you for or against this new proposal?
I am generally for it. Uh, I I think with respect to uh, Commissioner Labonte, I joined the Planning Commission in twenty seventeen, and the planning document the city was working with at that time was from nineteen seventy six. So whatever we do today isn't all going to be implemented tomorrow. Uh, there there's options. We have a couple of guys out here that have some property that they'd like to build on. And if we allow them to go four stories, it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to, or the three, or they may just sell the property. Uh, it's it, these things, uh, they they bake in over time. They don't all happen immediately. Um, I've lived here for forty years. I haven't seen a whole lot of change in Gladstone, but there's been some. But uh, I I looked to the city to the north in Milwaukee where they've kind of redone their main street. They have a municipal parking lot. Uh, it it's uh, it's hardly a Speedway in there. It's still, it still has a small town ambience to it. But we need to have a something in place that's workable for uh, the administration of the city for for years to come, not just for the next year or so. So I would be in favor of this, uh, as opposed to trying to maintain. Be nice if we could maintain Gladstone the way it is, but I don't believe that's reality.
Not to be a prosperous, thriving city. I I'd have to agree with you. I like the uh, example you used in the city of Milwaukee because I've always gone there a lot, whether it's for the farmer's market. And when they've gone through their process, they have changed their codes, building codes, so they could build higher. And I still get that same feel because there's, you know, Grandma's Corner right there.
Still small town.
Yeah, still small town. So um, Commissioner Volbada, I'm getting there.
So close. Yes, I am for it as well.
Okay.
Um, and I I agree, having grown up in the area and been here forever, seeing, you know, the changes in Oregon City, seeing the changes throughout Milwaukee. Um, I I completely hear you, Commissioner Labonte, and uh, I I I hear your concerns. And I think that the reason, you know, the fact that we're talking about them now and we can see like potential, you know, it gives us ample opportunity to uh, perhaps cut them off in the future. Um, but in the meantime, I think what we've got going on right here is a great, great step forward.
Commissioner Milch, yea or nay?
As as far as the specific question about the size of the overlay zone, uh, I'm in favor of extending the boundaries east and west to the edge of the current C two zone in the downtown region.
Okay.
And I'm comfortable with keeping it from Arlen to Exeter for the time being. Uh, a response a little bit to uh, Commissioner Labonte's uh, concerns. We have the advantage in Gladstone and they, as they do in Milwaukee, of being an incorporated area that uh, has the ability to set its own rules and to uh, to use the language that I've heard John Southgate use on occasion, to set the table and then get out of the way uh, to make possible the kinds of development that we hope could happen to expand the tax base of this community, to make it more walkable, uh, to to make the downtown more vibrant in a number of ways. Uh, Mr. Marsh pointed out that uh, right now, what we're doing is putting boundaries up uh, that prevent people from uh, developing property uh, in a cost effective way. And uh, if you do that, whether it's housing or anything else that you need in a community, uh, it doesn't get built. And uh, a community that that doesn't build and doesn't grow uh, will not thrive. Prices will go up because demand will still be there and demand will grow. But uh, the community will not reap the advantages. I would love to see, and I I'm soon going to have a new opportunity to serve the city in a different capacity. And one of my goals is to uh, to see economic development throughout the region. Um, I drive to Milwaukee too, and sometimes to Selwood and up and down McLaughlin Boulevard. And uh, I would really like to see a lot more uh, pedestrian friendly development on the McLaughlin corridor. Uh, but the problem is that most of that right now uh, is in the region of Oak Grove and Jennings Lodge uh, and under the jurisdiction of Clackamas County and not an incorporated city. So they don't have an easy way to make the kinds of changes that we can make here. I hope at some point to encourage the county to to look at the importance of doing that kind of economic development in that particular region. But one of the issues that seems to have uh, really stirred up a lot of our residents is the proposed tolling on the two oh five freeway. Because in order to get to the economic engines that uh, that run this economy, people have to get on a freeway and drive to Washington County or Multnomah County to get to work or to get to the places that they want to go for entertainment. And uh, the more we can uh, localize uh, the economic development, bring it closer to home, as we're proposing to do through this development, uh, the less people have to get on the two oh five uh, or the five to go to those other places. And uh, you know, maybe we could get it to the point where we've reduced the congestion and the need to commute so much uh, that the tolls would be lower or wouldn't be necessary. that the tolls would be lower or wouldn't be necessary at all. I think that's a more effective way of addressing that issue. So, uh, I'm definitely in favor of, uh, as, of this as a way of encouraging economic development within our own city. I think as Chair Smith mentioned a couple of meetings ago, uh, we need to look at creative ways of managing the parking situation. Shuttle buses from distant parking lots, uh, near the downtown, um, uh, a well-planned, uh, parking for fees so that, uh, there's just enough encouragement to, uh, you know, to pay a, a small amount to park, but to stay because there are so many great attractions that you don't bat an eye about pay, paying for parking. Uh, because you're not just driving downtown to park in one-on-one business and go in for an hour and come out. You're there to spend the day and eat some food and, uh, get your haircut and, uh, buy some books and.
Go to the library.
Go to the library, yeah, all those things.
Yeah.
That's where I am.
Okay, um, Commissioner Langston?
Uh, yeah, I'm in favor for expanding the, um, the overlay.
Okay. So without further ado, and looking at the time, does someone want to make a motion to make a decision?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that the, uh, planning commission recommend to the city council adoption of the proposed changes in the C two, uh, zoning ordinance that are contained in appendix B of tonight's, tonight's agenda.
I'll go ahead and read the file number. It's TXT dash two zero two-two dash two.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Milch made the motion, and Commissioner Langston seconded it. Tammy, will you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Hi.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
No.
Commissioner Milch.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, motion passed. Oh, it passed. And yes, Commissioner Milch, you and I have talked about, or I've, you know, thought about, this is an opportunity. You know, just like I had mentioned one time about the church parking lot on Dartmouth. You know, this is an opportunity for someone to figure out some alternative ways to provide parking and actually make an income at it if they choose to do so. So I'm not worried about it. I'm sure someone's going to come up with a great idea. Okay, great. So on to the next. Do we have any business from the, uh, audience or public?
We have not received any requests, no.
Okay, business from the planning commission. Uh, Commissioner Milch, do you have anything to share?
Well, as you know, if you've read the Clackamas review and followed the election results, uh, I will be leaving the planning commission at the end of December to pursue, uh, a new leadership opportunity in the city. I want to thank, um, my friends who happen to serve on the planning commission, who also, uh, supported me during my campaign for mayor. And, uh, and I shared tonight just to some of, of what, uh, is important to me about the, the future of this city. I'm excited about that opportunity. I'm very grateful for, uh, the exchanges that we've had in this setting over the years and the opportunity I had to leave you, leave you for a couple of years. That this is where, uh, the city really looks ahead and thinks about, uh, what it can be and what it can become. That shaped, uh, my vision that I presented to voters. And, uh, it looks like, uh, they agree in part in, in what's important to me and what's important to some of the other candidates who ran. So, um, uh, I will, I will miss, uh, being a part of this body. I look forward to continuing to work with this body in the future. Thank you.
You'll be at our December meeting, won't you?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Labonte, do you have any business to share?
Well, I hope, I sure hope I'm wrong about this, twenty years out. The, but I guess one, one thing I'd just like to mention, I know that we've got a plan for a, um, an emergency, um, uh, water tank in, in Gladstone, um, at what is the nature park. And that's the, the only planned location for this. I think it's a two and a half million gallon, might be five million gallon tank, and I'd like to, as we move forward in meetings, um, I'd certainly like to have some discussion about, you know, the possibility of a, a plan B. Maybe some other options for, um, for where that water tank can go in opposed to the, the, um, you know, the nature park there, which I understand is zoned C two. And I'd also be interested in the city looking at maybe changing that to make, officially make that area a park. But I'd say those are, those are my two comments, and, um, thank you very much for, for listening to me tonight, guys.
Both you guys get well. If you're not, I know that, um, Commissioner Milch, you're not, uh, not feeling very well. I hope you get better. And I'm assuming that's the same with you, Andrew, so get better.
Is it that obvious? Thank you, yes.
Thanks. Commissioner Mercero, do you have any business to share?
No business to share.
Commissioner Smith?
Uh, nothing else. Thank you.
Commissioner Jennifer?
I'm not going to try it again. No news, but congratulations, Michael.
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Langston?
Travis Langston.
No, I just wanted to say I appreciate, uh, what, uh, Commissioner Milch said earlier regarding, you know, our plan. I definitely see it that way. Our, our, um, staff u- utilized resources, put, put together a downtown revitalization, revitalization plan, and, uh, it was up to us to push this forward, and I felt like that was our, my, my marching orders, and I was here to do that. So, and, and, uh, Commissioner Milch, uh, definitely gave great perspective on what we were trying to accomplish here. So appreciate him saying that, and I appreciate everybody's hard work and, and all the support we receive from staff. Uh, so it, it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
I don't really have much to say other than I greatly appreciate Commissioner Milch's leadership as the chair for, I think, what did you serve for, two years? Yes, thank you, and congratulations. I also am hoping that for our December meeting that I can have Commissioner Langston, go ahead and do it, since he's the vice chair, just for fun. And with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Unless there's any other business we need to take care of, Tammy.
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Smith made the motion to adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Langston seconded it. Tammy, could you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte? Commissioner Labonte?
You're muted, Andrew.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Hi.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned at eight oh eight PM. Thank you.